A public comment, the rules are the same as Mrs. Venus Clemens explained earlier. Anyone wish to make a public comment before we start the finance committee agenda?
Sue Spurlock, West Rock Hill Township. This is a finance committee meeting. My question to you is, how do you think it's fair to forgive two companies here in the district 50% of their taxes and lay out a payment schedule so that in year one they pay 0% of that increment amount, 10%, 20%, 30%, to the point that the time value of money means that by the time the school finally collects like 80 or 90% to 100%, it's 10 years from now. That doesn't do me any good. And it doesn't have to be 10 years. I've looked up, LERTA can be anywhere up to 10 years. And I'd like to know how much this is going to cost the district. You haven't even seen phase two. You haven't seen phase three at the airport. So for you to tie your hands and vote for phase one, which ties your hands on two and three, that you've got to have the same layout, is premature. They've been working on this for two years, they said, and now they want you to figure out your part in two months. If you think that's fair, you have a whole different concept of fair. I want to know from you all, the amount of the taxes that you are forgiving for each project, dollar amount, and the amount of purchasing power that you are losing by taking your half at the tail end of the 10 years instead of the beginning of the 10 years. If you can't tell the public how much you're giving away and how much what you are collecting is impacted by inflation, then don't vote because you don't know what you're voting for. And I think that's where you are right now. Tell me how much and what your purchasing power loss is because of a 10-year inflation rate.
Thank you, Mrs. Spurlock. And we do have a presentation tonight concerning LERTA. So hopefully we'll all learn a bit more from that. Anyone else for public comment? If not, we'll move to the LERTA presentation. We have Mr. Robert Cormack from the Bucks County Economic Development Corporation tonight. Mr. Cormack, thank you for coming, and we look forward to seeing what you have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Cormack, there's a smiley face on the --
Oh, sorry, I shouldn't have turned it off.
Yeah, I think it's turned off.
Yeah, see the little smiley face?
Why don't you help him there?
On the box. Come on there.
Oh, that smiley face. Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Just to give you some background on this, this is the presentation on LERTA Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act. And you'll see, and you've had the slides to review, so I'll go through this fairly quickly to give you an overview of what the program is all about. And that's all I'm really here tonight to talk about, is the program, how it's utilized effectively in the economic development world. But again, it's just going to give you the overview of the program and how we've made it work. Next slide. I work for the Bucks County Economic Development Corporation. We are a 501(c)(4). We're a private economic development group. We're certified by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for Bucks County. We receive no tax dollars from the state, from the county, and from federal government. We're a fee-based agency. On the amount of loan activity, we utilize through different funding programs, through the Commonwealth and as well as other companies. I just wanted to know how we function. Go to the next one. And go to the next one. Again, LERTA Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act was created in 1977. Now, I'm going to date myself a little bit first to give you some background. I actually took, the LERTA program was put together by Chuck Blankenship. He was with the Department of Community and Development in Harrisburg. The real reason this program was put together was for inner cities, looking at an inner city, looking at deteriorated property and so forth. I looked at the program when I was working with Pocono Mountain Industries in Monroe County, and I was the first economic development organization to take LERTA and actually put it into a rural environment, which was, we were creating a brand-new industrial park, and we used one of the 14 criteria to establish the reason why we wanted the program. So Bucks County, we've done it in Falls Township, we've done it in Bristol Township, we've done it in Newtown Township, so we've done it also in Richland Township. So we've had, my organizations have a lot of working relationships with different organizations in putting the program together. The act, and I really want to strongly emphasize this, the act talks about taxing authorities. You need to have the taxing authorities approve the project. And there's only three taxing authorities that can do that, the county, the school district, and a municipality. Those are the three taxing authorities. They all have to be in concert with each other, and I really mean that. What we tell clients, and I have a client right now, is that you need to get the school district first. Get the school district onboard to support your project. That's where the bulk of the dollars come from. Okay? You just need to understand that. Again, that program, we talk about deteriorated areas, economically depressed communities and so forth. So it's pretty extensive. If you look at one of the other slides, it'll tell you a little bit more about it. We talk about improvements. You need to understand the existing tax base does not change on what with LERTA. It's only based on the improvement to the property. An example, we have a building in East Rock Hill Township that's a manufacturing structure. I had a company come in to me and ask me about, is there tax abatement on that project, on that building? And if I buy the building, can I get LERTA to do, to help me out? The response is, no. Unless you're making an improvement to the property, you cannot receive LERTA approval. You can't get, because what you're doing is, when you look at the assessor's office in the county, they will not reassess that property to make it look like there's anything happening, because anything within the, within the building framework, walls and ceiling, they won't reassess it. On that note, we were able to get a reassessment, and we did LERTA for a company called Lennox, Lennox China. They bought an old manufacturing building in Bristol Borough. They took the manufacturing facility and they turned it into a 100% office space. We were able to get LERTA for that project because the county tax assessment office reassessed the property at a higher rate because manufacturing is at a lower rate, where offices at a higher rate. So the company was able to take effect with using LERTA for that particular project. And the building was a dial-sol factory, just to let you know about it. Deteriorated property. One of the things we look at from a deteriorated property standpoint is the physical attributes of the property or detriments of the property. And you've already looked at a property, the fire board has already looked at a property, the Gage facility in Sellersville. You approved the project because it was a redevelopment site. They had, you know, you had a contaminated site that needed to have a little bit of a oomph to make sure people might want to locate there. But without LERTA, you really wouldn't have the ability to attract new companies there because of the fact that it's a redevelopment site. Critical, prior to adopting a resolution, and all three taxing bodies have to approve a resolution, you need to understand what tax parcels are involved in the process, which means you have to have a map and you have to have individual parcel numbers, which gives you a clear indication of what parcels the project is looking at, to include it in the LERTA district. You need to understand what tax parcel numbers and what parcels are within the district being approved. That's just a critical component. So a description of each is necessary. The resolution that gets passed by the taxing authorities, one has to have, again, the tax parcel numbers and the map. Number two is you need to be talking about the length of time. Is it a one-year program? Is it a 10-year program? Is it a five-year program? The act allows you to go up to 10 years. The act also allows you to do 100% tax deduction on the improvement to the property, and it can be for a whole 10-year period. Typically, what we see in Bucks County, it's a five-year program, 0% the first year, increases 20% thereafter. We also, just so you have the knowledge, they just passed LERTA district in Shawburn Borough, just for the downtown in Shawburn. Five-year program, 100% deduction for the five years. It's been approved by the county at this point, and it has not been, I think it's going in front of the school district. A program where you've seen five-year programs, you've had 10-year programs, you've had 100% deduction. It really is a decision of the three taxing bodies. The developer, the owner of the ground can make suggestions, but the taxing bodies make the final decision. Critically, you understand that. And again, that percentage can be whatever you think is necessary, and that talks about what's going to be exempt from paying taxes in that first year thereafter. Quick summary, very easy. The Pendleton School Board is an authorized local taxing authority. Punto final, you are part of the process, you have to make the decision, you set the Boundaries, deteriorators, deteriorator areas, you need to have the boundaries completely delineated so you can have it in part of your resolution, and that's not only a map, but that's also parcel numbers. So you know exactly what parcel number meets with what particular section or area. You have to pass a resolution. LERTA requires, and just so you're aware of this, LERTA requires two out of the three taxing bodies to have a LERTA district. Again, you can have a county, you can have a township, but if you look at what the dollars are derived from those two taxing bodies is de minimis compared what is taxed from the school district standpoint. So what we tell clients, the school district is critical. If you don't have the school district, you don't have a program. But again, you should be aware of the fact, two taxing bodies can make it work. All right? We talked about the criteria, 1 through 14. The length of the schedule can be 1 to 10 years, depending on what percentage you want to put in. Property exemption shall not terminate, a very key component. Once you establish a LERTA district, now you establish a district, let's just say for 10 years, during that 10-year period, that piece of property or that building that's under the LERTA program gets sold. LERTA continues with the property that's sold with the new buyer. So it doesn't, because you've sold the property to a third party, doesn't terminate LERTA, it stays with the property, and it has no bearings on who owns it. Just so you're aware of that, that's something you should be aware of. And again, I said before, it's two taxing bodies out of the three that have to approve it to make it a district, but without the school district, you don't have a program. And that's LERTA, Bob Cormack style, telling you exactly where it stands. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Board members had lots of questions before. Mr. Kraus, I assume you --
Mr. Cormack. Question for you, on the last summary slide here.
Can you speak up?
One of your items is, all taxing authorities required to hold a public hearing. Is that all three have to have individual public hearings?
That is correct.
Okay. But we only need two of the taxing authorities to have a LERTA program?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Bob, how are you?
Good.
I did, after our last meeting, I did talk to Sellersville Borough, and there is, they are five years, and it goes from 0 to 100%. So that is an example of a five-year. But in further investigation, I was talking to someone, and it was suggested that we get the business summary of these, this company, you know, their financials. Do we need to go that far into the woods with the people, you know, with this company that wants to do a LERTA project? Do we need to get all their financials and business health?
Well, you're not, you're not making a, oh, off again, Bill? Sorry.
Time tail.
I got it.
Talk too much.
The blue light.
I've never seen a municipality or a taxing authority ask for that type of information. But it's not to say that you can't.
But if it, I guess, but if it travels or stays with the property, then I guess it really doesn't matter the financial health of the owner? I mean, could they, I mean, could construction start and then the area is left with, you know, upheaval of unfinished product?
Then it would really, then it would really be something that you'd need for LERTA. If it starts and doesn't complete itself.
Okay, all right. So, okay.
And plus the fact, if the project, if you approve LERTA, and the developer that's, whatever developer you're talking about, starts the project and turns around and sells it, LERTA still stays with that project with the new owner.
No, I understand that, but what if they can't sell it?
It still stays there.
Isn't that about where we are with the Gage?
No, no, not at, not at all. They have two, two of six properties under agreement of sale.
But nothing's been built there.
Yes, it has. I talked, I told you, I talked to Sellersville. They have a road going in, a cul-de-sac, they have, I think, some facility, you know, junk going in.
I understand your question.
They, they have, the infrastructure has been put into place.
Thank you.
For that project, and they do have two companies that they're looking at or have signed sales agreement.
Yeah.
To build buildings.
Right.
The LERTA program doesn't come into play until the building is completed.
Right.
Occupied.
Right.
And the assessor puts an assessment.
I have one question too. May I, Dr. Fiona? I had a question for Sellersville, and they couldn't answer this question. So the land is always stays taxable at the rate that we assign. So if we have tax increase, does that land, do the taxes on that land correspond to our tax increases or the municipalities?
The existing, the existing tax base stays within the taxing authority, okay? And which means if there's an increase on the land tax, that increase would be seen by the school district.
Okay, so it, so the land.
By the taxing bodies, I should say.
Okay, thank you. I got all yeses everywhere, so I guess.
So I think you sort of answered my question. So you kind of require them to, if we want to start to recover money more quickly and incentivize these people to, in fact, get to the point where the land is developed so that we don't have these halfway-done projects, we can't have the clock start ticking on the 10 years from the moment, you know, we make the agreement?
The clock starts ticking in 10 years. So in other words, let's say we started it in 2000, today, whatever that, whatever date it is.
I think it's 2018.
The 18th. You go out to 2028. That's when the LERTA district is dissolved. So they have until that period of time to put properties in place. The thing that you need to understand is, if someone comes in in 2026, that is two more years left, and they build a building, that property is exempt of taxes for the following 10 years.
Okay, so that's my question.
Right.
There's no way make them, I thought maybe if you could have the clock tip faster, then that would make them develop it, and we wouldn't be waiting on these plated properties to be.
It's, it's a fact of looking at the developer, he's looking at the incentive, and with the incentive in place, that gives him greater ability to market his project and attract clients.
Okay.
Or tenants.
Other questions for Mr. Cormack?
So you're saying if they build a building now, and then they build a building right before the 10 years, it starts over again?
Just for that building, they just erected, correct.
So that, okay. And if the school district decides, so once you lock into that, is there any way out?
No.
Because, or?
I mean, I shouldn't say no, never say no, but I've never seen anything happen from that standpoint.
Because I think the suggestion from the attorney was that there would be a clause that says that we could back out at any time. You're saying you can't put, you can't do a clause?
The act has not called for that.
Okay, so once you sign up for this, you're in, and that's it?
You're in, correct. That's my understanding.
That sounds like a reason why you really need to know the tax parcels, right?
It's critical. That is a critical component within the LERTA program, is knowing exactly what you're looking at.
And Peter, to add on to that, I would say the total scope of the proposed project on those parcels, because that could be spaced out, intentionally spaced out over time, so that it ends up being a much longer period than we anticipate.
Mrs. Yarden?
Yeah, I have, I just want to clarify. So I understand that you said that the, whatever the agreement is for the tax incentive or the tax break starts when the building is completed and occupied, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then did you say they have 10 years to complete the building?
No, no, what happens is.
So what's the time limit on completing the building?
You have a 10-year period, and when that building gets completed and there's an assessment from the county on the building, that starts the clock for the 10-year period.
If you have a 10-year agreement, but if you --
Whatever, whatever year frame you have.
Whatever it is, it's anywhere from one to 10 years. Well, what's the time limit for completing the project? That's what I don't understand.
10 years.
It's 10 years?
If, if you pick a 10-year period.
Oh, so if you pick a five-year period for the, for the --
Whatever the, whatever the timeframe the taxing body authorizes, whether it's one year or 10 years, that's the timeframe, it's in existence.
But that's the time, but that's the timeframe that they have to complete the building also?
Correct.
So if you make a five-year deal, they have five years to?
Complete a property.
And have it be occupied and assessed?
Well.
And then the five-year clock starts?
Yeah, it's assessed, not occupied. So on that note, if you've got a developer who's building a building, and he's going to put it up, and it's going to be unoccupied, as long as that building has an assessment to it, that's when LERTA program starts.
Okay. So if you make, if the LERTA incentive is five years, you have the, whoever they are building it, they have five years to build it, and then as soon as it's assessed, the five-year clock starts?
Correct.
If it's 10 years, if it's a 10-year agreement, they have 10 years?
Mm-hmm, correct.
To complete the building, and then the, once it's assessed, then the clock starts? Okay, that's just what I wanted to clarify.
You had mentioned that you need two taxing authorities to sign off on it. Does that then automatically make the third tax entity have to comply?
No. So you can have a LERTA district established by the municipality and the county, and the school district doesn't join in, the taxes derived from that property are not subject to LERTA approval.
And on your one slide, you listed 14 different criteria.
Mm-hmm.
So you're saying if the property does not fit one of those 14 things, then you cannot give them LERTA status, is that correct?
That comes directly from the act, and that would be part of the authorizing taxing authority to make that determination, that they don't need one of the 14 criteria, and a reason why you wouldn't accept LERTA for that taxing authority.
Okay, last question. The attorney had suggested at our last meeting that we wait and see what the borough wants to do and kind of piggyback onto them, but you're suggesting that the school district should go first. Is that, am I, am I missing that?
I've, I've been, with all the clients that I've dealt with, I've always said to them, go to the school district first. They're the biggest bite out of your, out of the LERTA district. Without the school district, you really don't have a program. So you look towards the school district first. The school district and whatever municipality you're dealing with should work together to understand what tax parcel numbers you're talking about, and also probably agree on what you're looking at from a timeframe. But I've always said, get the approval from the school district first.
So the school district can reach out to the borough and to the county and get their perspectives as well on whether or not they think they should qualify for LERTA status?
Yes, you certainly have that option.
And then if the board, so as far as the process, if the board decided that they wanted to move ahead with LERTA status and there was, would they vote on it? And then it would go to a hearing, or?
You, well, again.
How does it go to the hearing?
I don't know how you run your, your board meetings here. You probably want to get general concurrence, that LERTA is something you want to pursue, but you have to have a public meeting where the public is able to stand up in front of the podium and voice their opinion on the proposed district. And that proposed district will talk about time frames, percentages, and what parcels.
When you say meeting, you mean the hearing?
The hearing.
Hearing, okay, just a minute. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Well, you only need two of the three authorities to get that status, right?
Two out of the three can get an approved district, correct.
But the third then doesn't have to comply. So let's say the county and the borough, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the county and the borough said, we're giving you LERTA status, and the school district says no, then the school district still is not giving them that tax break, just those other two are. But if, if then, say the borough said they wanted to give them LERTA status, but both of us said no, that would basically tie in the borough's hands, and they couldn't give them LERTA status.
That is correct.
Is that right?
That's correct.
Just, just make one thing clear for the, for the board members. Just because it's to the advantage of the developer to seek the school board's approval first does not mean that that is what the school district or the school board has to do. The school board still can say, I'm going to wait to see what plan the township or the borough or the county puts out, out in play first and see if we like that or not. Correct?
They can go in any direction the developer or owner of the property feels is necessary. So if they wanted to go to the municipality first, then go to the county, then the school district, that's their option. I'm just telling you how we positioned it with all of my clients that in Bucks County. We went to the school district first.
Sure, it's absolutely to the developer's advantage to go to the school district first.
Correct.
But it's not the school district's responsibility to move first.
That is correct.
Yes, this is Cole. Do you, does your?
Can you speak up, please?
Does your, the B C E D C, do you guys not advise the taxing entities on whether something qualifies as a LERTA? Do you stay out of that? You just kind of present what the criteria are, or do you ever give recommendations one way or the other?
We've given recommendations. We've talked to, to the school board at township about a particular project, so yes, we have. And we've also talked to clients to make them aware of the 14 criteria, and we make sure that they understand that they better comply with that. So it's critical that we get both parties to understand that. Also, we do make one comment, I make one comment to all the clients I've had from Monroe County when I worked with the Department of Commerce all the way into Bucks County, is the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and all their financing programs say, if you commence the project before approval, you show that you have the financial wherewithal the project before approval, you've showed that you have the financial wherewithal to move the project forward. And I state the same thing to every one of my clients looking at LERTA. You've got to make sure that you, you're not jumping the gun, is what it says.
Are we allowed to know if any of the people who have come to us to ask are, have come to you?
Sure.
We're allowed to know that?
I have, from the standpoint of looking at Upper Bucks, we've talked to Cold Storage Facilities in Richland Township, we have not talked to anybody in the Penridge School District.
Okay, thank you.
So how could, is it possible then that we could, how would we go about getting your opinion on whether or not a, a property qualified for LERTA status? Is that something that we could do, or?
What, was that for the kids you're getting paid? I'm kidding, kidding.
Five dollars an hour.
Well, that's, I'll cut it for me, thanks, I appreciate that.
Because you're involved.
You, you can...
We'd be looking for a rebate.
You could certainly give me a call, I could sit down with a, a small group, and we could talk about it, I don't have a problem with that. And my, my board wouldn't have a problem with that either.
Okay, but what you're saying, because if, so if one of these two properties already started the projects, they wouldn't qualify for LERTA status?
That's how, that's how it's looked at from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in their financing programs. So, and I'm just giving you that as an example. So if we have a, a program looking through the Pennsylvania Industrial Development Authority, and they want to purchase a building and get 60, 60% financing on a building through the state, you cannot commence with the project, because you've showed the financial wherewithal, and the financing is not available to you.
So shouldn't they have to show that they can't, so, so basically what you're saying is the point of LERTA is that without LERTA, they wouldn't be able to move forward with the project? So wouldn't they have to show some kind of, of lack of the, show that they don't have the financial, they don't have the finances available to do the project?
They want to, you're going to ask them for what the impediments are for them not to get their project forward, moving forward without the LERTA district.
So if, if they can, if, if it's clear, if it's clear that they can afford to do the project with or without LERTA, then they really shouldn't be getting LERTA, because that's the point of LERTA?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's how I anticipated.
Thank you.
I have a question. Thank you. Two questions, Bob. First, if I recall, the request or claim that he required or was asking for LERTA because he would attract higher-paying tenants, that without it, he didn't feel like he could have quality tenants, wasn't that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's my first question, so old lady, so would that qual, would, would that be a sin of qualification for LERTA?
Is that part of the 14 criteria that might?
I didn't actually go through the 14 criteria. I'm asking you, Bob.
Uh, you would have to look at the 14 criteria and determine whether or not...
That applies.
That was something would apply.
Okay, my second question is, if I understood this, you offered to meet with board members to, to discuss if this was, you know, a way we should go as a district?
I'd be more than happy to talk to the board members about the program itself.
Not, okay, because, and I, and I'm going to be direct, you live in the neighborhood that would be directly affected by this project, so I would not like you to offer advice about this project, just LERTA.
It's fine with me.
Okay, I just want that out in front of the board. Thank you.
Anyone else? I will comment that when we approved the US gauge property, there was a separate hearing. It was not done as part of a finance committee meeting or a public board meeting per se, it was a special night, special, specifically for that purpose.
Mm-hmm.
Which I believe is what you're saying.
That is correct, that's right.
If we move forward.
I, I just wanted to clarify, because reading these comments, it doesn't seem like the point of LERTA is to help somebody with the, necessarily, the point isn't just to help them with the finances just in and of itself, it's because the property is a difficult property that people wouldn't necessarily normally want to do. It could be a business that has a lot of money, but it's that, that's, that's renovating the property, but the point is, it's because it's an undesirable or something, one of those problems, one of those 14 problems with the property. So it's in, sort of an undesirable property, it's not that the company who's redoing it is so poor that they wouldn't be able to do it without it.
It's really an incentive to attract new business into, into the jurisdiction, and in turn create new job opportunities for the residents in your jurisdiction.
And revenue.
And additional revenue.
Right, so I'm just clarifying, because the statement was made that it's, if the company has money to do it, they don't need the LERTA, it's, that's not really...
That's, that's, that's looking at state financing programs. The state says if you show the financial wherewithal to move the project, and you've started it prior to getting acceptance of the state financing programs, you've eliminated yourself from getting financing.
Okay, but it's not related to LERTA?
No, no, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
So, but if they're looking to get a, if they're looking, if, if they already started a project, and they have the finances to finish that project, it wouldn't really be beneficial to give them LERTA status, right?
The, it's all based on the assessment of the property, if what they're doing, if, hypothetically here, if they're doing something prior to erecting a building or putting in infrastructure, you could say that they're just either moving dirt or moving trees, which really doesn't have an effect on a project. So it's really about the assessment of the property, and how the assessment is made by the county government, which starts the LERTA process.
So one last question, so that I'm crystal clear in my head. So if a developer starts a project, builds a building, finishes that building, and the county makes an assessment on that building, the taxes are assessed based on that assessment, and the length of term of the LERTA program, regardless of whether or not that developer has tenants?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Wait a second, isn't that the opposite of what they said at that last meeting? Because I thought they said that, I thought, I thought, so the taxes do not, that does not follow the tenants of that property?
No.
It's not what we were told.
The tenant, the, the tenant, if you're looking at a, a developer building buildings, it's when the building is completed, it's not when the tenant moves in.
Right, right, right.
I mean, that's, it would be foolish for the developer to build a building, and then get an assessment, or not get an assessment, and wait until he has a tenant in the building, who knows how long that would take.
So, so to suggest that it doesn't affect, that this doesn't affect the developer at all, it only defect, it only affects the tenants that would be living there, would be a disingenuous statement? Because it certainly does affect the developer.
Well, it affects the developer, but in return, remember that he'll be able to offer the tenant a lower lease rate because of the fact that he's got tax abatement on the property.
Right.
There's the, there's the key with the tenant, is knowing that he's got a, a tax abatement on that facility which derives a lower tax rate.
Right, but whether, whether there's tenants or not, his tax rate is still the same, it still goes to him and not the tenants.
Correct.
But it's to his advantage to get tenants, and I think, you know, if I were in that situation, and I knew I only had this many years to go, I, I would, I would want to grab someone quickly and say, hey, you know, I have this thing, this LERTA, and you can have a lower lease rate, you see what I'm saying? Like, they would...
So it attracts tenants, you're speaking?
Yeah.
Well, so when you're, when you're setting, when you're setting a, when you're renting something to someone, you're looking at what the market value is, and when you're an investor, you're going to charge whatever rent, the highest rent that the market will allow you to charge. So it's, it's not going to, it's not like, oh, well, since I'm saving this much money, I'm going to pass it on to my tenant. That's not, that's not typically how it works. So a, it's someone who owns that property is going to be looking at, what's the maximum I can get in rent for this property, and still fit, and still be competitive with other comparable properties in the area? That's, that's what an investor would be doing. So, yeah, I mean, it would be to that person's benefit, but the suggestion that was made at that last meeting was that, that, that it wouldn't, that, that this, this only impacts the tenant and is directly paid by the tenant, and not by him, which, which, if you watch it back, I'm telling you.
He said that.
Please.
Yes, please, we need to move on.
Yeah, I know.
I certainly appreciate Mr. Cormac's time and...
So that everybody's aware, this property is already advertised, the square footage price is already advertised, Cooper's has the property, you can look it up on LoopNet, it's out there. So, and that's competitive to local properties, regardless of the tax situation.
Mr. Kraus, that's Colliers, not Coopers.
I'm sorry.
Is there any, can, does LERTA have anything that it can do to require someone to not do that? I mean, if you're going to get this door to break, there's nothing that says you can be required to pass that on to your tenants? If in fact, because if this is supposed to be used to incentivize people, you know, if they're saying, I need this, to get people to come rent from me, then shouldn't they be required to pass it on to the tenant?
Yeah, I'll give you an example, with Lennox, that looked at the Dial Soap Factory, they moved with LERTA, so they got a lower, they, they got an abatement on the improvements to the property. With Lennox, they had an LLC own the building and leased it back to Lennox, and in turn, they gave Lennox a lower lease rate because of the abatement.
But is that something you could require?
Yeah, but that's...
Could they be bound to that?
That, that is a decision of the developer, and you and I can't make that whether it is or isn't.
Well, no, I want to be, okay.
I would assume that the person that would be occupying the space would know about LERTA and make that inquiry.
Okay, thank you very much, it was very informative. At this point, we do need to move on to the other items on the agenda, so the next thing is the review of contracts.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have contracts tonight, for Kids Peace, two of those, one for Med Flex, which was something that we talked about at the last finance committee meeting, and there were questions, the solicitor has looked at that, reviewed it, as they have others here, but that was postponed. There's a yearbook agreement for South Medical, Middle School, student for Centennial, but through the Carbonly High Intermediate Unit, that has been reviewed by the solicitor, and the truancy services offered by the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, the contracts. Mr. Daubert, do you have any additional things that you'd like to comment about, any or all of these items?
Okay, yes, the, the Carbonly I I U is for a student, as you said, it's Centennial, it's a change in the needs for that student that is placed at Centennial, that's why it's coming to the board.
It's a, it's a, it's a Centennial School, not Centennial School District.
All right, thank you.
There's a difference.
Okay.
And then the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Truancy Service, Dr. Hernan, I had a conversation about that today, that is a new program.
Can you tell us about that a little bit?
Can you speak up, please?
What I know is that there's been some changes in the requirements for truancy, there needs to be truancy intervention plans put in place, you can't just find the student any longer with the parents any longer, you have to go through a process. So we're handling, handling that in-house, but this is being put in place with the I U in case there's a situation where we need their assistance with, with the truancy issue, if there's a particular situation where we need their help with it, that's what this is for.
Is this for educational services and counseling services, is that, I mean, is that what we're talking about? I didn't really get to that.
Yeah, there's a, there's a type of, a list on the, on the second page, types of services, intervention.
This isn't just going to get a child returned to school?
Right.
Okay, that's what I...
There has to, there has to now be a plan in place and a, and a process, so, again, we're handling in, in-house, but if we need their help, we have to have this in place.
Okay, I, thank you, that's what I, I was trying to understand.
So this is an agreement for, it's a, it's a list of services, so if a student is truant, and we say in order for the student, student not to be chairman, they need X, Y, and Z help.
Yes.
To help their family or help them, and so we would contract, we have this in place, we need to prove prices, and we would say, okay, the I U, we need help.
Yes.
Helping the student.
Yes, we have a situation where we, we're not able to do it in-house.
To meet the needs.
To meet the needs, we have the I U as a backup help for us, and that's why we just need to put this in place.
Okay, so we still might just handle it in-house, but if we can...
That's our first, that'll always be our first line of defense, is to handle it in-house, and we would only go to the I U if we, we did their help.
And if you recall, that's one of the reasons we added an extra social worker this year, because we knew this was coming. So Mr. Joe Warner was hired, and has done a great job, but sometimes, as Mr. Daubert says, we need a little bit more intervention than what we can do here. Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions on these items before we move them to the board agenda for March 26th? Everybody is in favor of moving forward with the contracts?
Mm-hmm.
All right, then we'll move on to the third item tonight. And that is the review of the Upper Bucks County Technical Schools 2018-2019 Tentative Budget. I will note that the J O C met, as they normally do, on the third Thursday of each month, they met on the third Thursday of February, and approved, I believe unanimously, if I remember correctly, approved that this item be moved to the sending school district boards. For those of you who haven't gone through this before, for the Upper Bucks County Technical School budget, it goes out to all 27 members of the three sending districts, Quaker Town, Palisades, and Penridge, and it requires a vote from those folks, 14 affirmative votes total or more to pass, and also the majority of two of the three sending school districts. So there are 27 votes, 14 must be an affirmative. Not voting counts as a no, effectively, because, you know, it, it doesn't go into the 14, obviously. So, attached, and I believe you were sent this in advance, is the entire budget proposal as put together by the business manager at the locational school. I can, or I'm sure Mr. Kraus or Mrs. Dolan can comment or clarify things on the budget. I will simply say that this budget is a slight increase over the prior year.
How much?
And I'm talking primarily of the general fund, because the budget really is composed of the five different funds that are listed on the front page. The general fund is the bulk of that, of course. The others, well, some of them are supposed to be self-funding, for instance, the evening school right now, it is not, because we, we're starting it up again, and the food service fund struggles to be self-funded, that's what it's intended to be, but it's, it's a real struggle, and it's more of a struggle right now, because the Quaker Town School District has pulled their students out of the cafeteria, which means that we are feeding two-thirds of probably, maybe actually closer to half of the students that we've sent prior year. Clearly, you've got no economy of scale on that sort of operation, so, so that, that's an additional problem that has raised its head this year. If you look through the individual object descriptions, you'll see that many of them have seen little change, a few have seen very large changes. Surprise, surprise, the medical insurance is up 33%, that's the biggest driver for the cost increase in this budget. Obviously, Peasars has gone up, as it has for all the school districts across the state, and, you know, other things have remained static, or, and some have been cut, new equipment and computer equipment have, have actually been cut to make this budget a little more palatable. I will also note that, as I've said before, the majority of the money for operating the general fund at the technical school comes from the individual sending districts.
How much?
And it's proportioned relative to the so-called W A bottoms, W A D Ms, which really are the average daily membership of, from the three sending schools. And so it goes up and down depending on who's sending more students and who's sending fewer students. In recent years, that trend has been that Quaker Town is sending more students, Penridge is sending about the same number of students, Palisades is sending fewer students. And the way the rules of the road are here, the maximum increase that any of the sending districts see is the percentage increase of Act One, in this case, it's two... page five, you'll see that Quaker Town's number has gone up slightly. It will actually be over $3 million in '19 should this budget be approved. Penridge is, and Palisades have both gone down. And therein lies the problem, not for Penridge, but the problem for the Upper County, or Upper Bucks County Technical School. Because whereas traditionally the three sending districts have supported 85% of the revenue, with the DOTEC school, we're now down to about 75%. This means that each and every year, the budget manager at the DOTEC has to build in more and more of the fund balance to balance the revenues and expenditures. Right now, this budget calls for almost $1.5 million of fund balance on a $10 million budget. That's, that's a hefty number, to say the least. And last year, we did not, they did not come in on, in the black, they actually did end up using some of that fund balance for the first time in some years, but it will only get worse the way the system is divided. We are, there is a committee dealing with the Articles Agreement that will meet and try to resolve this, but it's a difficult problem because in order to set things back to the way they were before Act One was invoked, you'd have to increase the Quaker Town budget by something like 27%. You'd say they won't vote for that. But all the districts would have to increase because the Penridge numbers proposed for this '19 budget of $2,239,713, at one point were nearly $3 million, and with not too many more students, a few more students, but not many more. So it's a dilemma that we have not resolved or solved. But the question really is for the board, obviously not tonight, but this will be brought before the board at the March meeting, whether you're willing to pass this budget as it stands, the attributed contribution from Penridge for the operating budget for '29.
How much?
Two, I just said that.
Thank you.
Dr. Gernon, pulling $1 million from the fund balance, how long do they think we can, the Upper Bucks can sustain?
Well, I mean, if nothing changes, you're going to see, in a few years, you're going to see no fund balance, basically.
Right.
Because the number last year was 1.1 million dollars, the proposed fund balance, that wasn't all used, of course. This year it's 1.5, so whatever part of that's used will, will be removed. And there are capital projects and other things that that fund balance goes towards. So, you know, it's, it's coming. It's not clear how many years, but it's a few years away.
And before, we have no fund balance.
Before there's no fund.
Thank you.
And the thing about UBCTS is not a taxing authority.
Correct.
So the JAC can't impose a tax to pay for the, the operation of the school. So what happens if the school goes in red and there isn't money in the fund balance to pay for it? The buck stops here, and not only here, the other two districts.
Right. Are they looking, are they already forward looking into what programs they would consider cutting?
I don't think forward enough looking, frankly, but I think that's coming, yes. I mean, we're not going to be able to afford the programs, even perhaps some of the ones that we have, if this continues.
That's, that's disturbing.
Mrs. Cullen?
Oh, so you're on a committee that's looking into changing this?
I am. Mr. Halliwell, the president of Palisades Board, and Mr. Klein, one of the new members from the Quaker Town Board, there's one member from each of the three sending districts, to look at the Articles Agreement, because they are the kind of stumbling block, if you will. These things are written into them, and that's the way we're, we're trying to operate. So if we don't change them, this problem will just expand year after year. It's like the Bing Bang Theory.
So when do you anticipate the committee being finished, and then how soon could you enact whatever change you're making?
Not for this year's budget is what I anticipate. The committee will be meeting this spring, and finished is a tough question because, as I say, this is one of those relatively intractable problems because it requires money. And, you know, none of the, none of the districts, in my view, none of the districts are supporting the DOTEC to the extent that they should be. We're all underfunding the DOTEC. And obviously, just as it would happen here, if we asked this board to approve a 27% increase for the DOTEC, it would happen, in my opinion, and the same is true at Quaker Town, and the same is probably true at Palisades. They aren't going to see that because they actually have a declining population.
I can't hear you.
Their students are contracted.
Can you please project?
Whereas the Quaker Town students have been growing, not dramatically, but growing, and ours have been relatively static. So, but then that all plays into the thing that the Articles of Agreement will have to be changed to readjust this, but even if it's done, I think it won't be, it'll be phased in as opposed to a drop dead, let's do it the right way right now.
Number one, two questions. Number two. Number one, we're never going to hear gentlemen's agreement again, is that correct?
Doesn't sound like.
Okay.
I mean, that didn't, last year it was recommended that we amend the Articles of Agreement. At the last moment, it was decided by...
By Quaker Town?
By the JOC that they didn't want to do that.
Right.
And so that's how that arose.
Number two, I was just up in Harrisburg today, and some of the discussion was around Governor Wolf's budget and how important this, I mean, I think they're demonstrating how important these technicals are. So any funding that we can expect from Harrisburg?
Well, I mean, there is funding that comes from Harrisburg, but I don't, no, not to mitigate this to this extent.
All right.
Funding from Harrisburg tends to be $100,000 in grant money a year. It's not $1 million, and it's not directed at the operating budget so much as it's buying a program typically.
With strings attached.
Mr. Dalbert says with strings attached, and I can't imagine that, but thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Yeah, no. I think that Harrisburg is not going to solve this problem. Who knows?
I was just curious, but I think it demonstrates the importance of these technical schools, that even anyone...
And there is money in the Wolf proposed budget to, to offer more money to technicals, but it's not going to make a difference that we're seeing here.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Keldare?
So has Quaker Town said anything to move back to what they're going to do on their end? I guess they say more students coming and...
Can you speak up, please? You're not registering on my audio even.
I said that, is there going forward, for Quaker Town, there's more students coming in and they're not going forward paying, they're paying less. Has there been any, like, feedback in talking as far as what they want to do on their end? Or is it kind of more like...
Lots of talk, so far no concrete action other than, as I say, because of the Articles Agreement, the limit, limit their increase is limited to Act One index. So this year, they will absorb the 2.4% increase, but that's all they'll absorb. And in theory, they should absorb a bigger increase, and we should have an increase, and Palisades should have an increase because the budget has gone up. So, you know, that, that's the situation we're in. But our increase would not be nearly what theirs would be.
Dr. Gernon?
Yes.
So Harrisburg can't do anything?
Well, won't, I'd say.
I'm just thinking, so there's just three of you trying to do, can you get help from someone else? Like, I mean, are there lawyers that, I'm just thinking, like, when you have, you have, like, arbitration for...
I don't think it's an determining issue, but I may be wrong. I mean, obviously, the business manager helps in advising us, if you do this, what happens, right? And projects forward, just as Mr. Dalbert would do. But as I say, it's a pretty tough problem because you can, what you can do would be to take out that Act One index limit, but all of a sudden, the numbers would balloon.
For Penridge as well.
And, well, all three districts would...
No, no, I understand.
It's Penridge as well.
I mean, I'm not looking to start a fight with anyone, but I'm just thinking it's on, it's on the three of you, and it sounds like a pretty big problem.
The nine of us. It's not just the three of us, right?
Okay.
Because it's, the committee will recommend, as they did last year, they will recommend to the JOC, then the JOC makes the decision about whether they want to amend the Articles Agreement or put in place some other mechanism. I mean, there are lots of different ways. If you look at different technical schools around the state, some of them fund their, some of the school districts fund them on money that's equal parts, like Penridge, Palisades, and Quaker Town would send the same amount of money to the DOTEC, which isn't a per-student basis, but the Articles Agreement here are written and have been in place for...